Supervisor Federies.
I'm here.
Councilman Fager.
Here.
Councilwoman Matisse.
Here.
Councilman Pragman.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Uh, there's two of us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you for coming. It's kind of warm in here, but nice outside. Uh, we will start. Public hearing, Brian Margarito telephone.
I just noticed that. I have to take that out.
I don't want to do that over. Privilege of the floor, you said there was a gentleman that expressed an interest in coming in.
Yes, but I do not believe I see that person and there was nobody on the clipboard unless they added it in the last minute.
And we know everybody that's sitting here, so it's not him.
Not him.
Okay. Moving along, is there anybody that nobody signed in? We're good to go. We have the minutes from the June 13th meeting. Guys who want to see the houses of it, any comments, suggested changes?
Make a motion to accept them.
I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carry. Did you get a report from the assessor?
I got an email from her about five minutes ago. Dear board members, on July, uh, July 2022 assessor's report, property assessment rolls were finalized and delivered for July 1st to the town clerk. Process has started for reevaluation for 2023. I'm reviewing sales from 2019 to current 2022. I met with Karen Quinn from State, Ellen from County Real Property, Bob Burgolo and Mark Los in June to start reevaluation plan. We'll meet again July 25th to go over the values of the sales. Mark is a tremendous help in this process. Very few calls are coming into the office right now. The new phone system is very comfortable for receiving and responding to calls.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, motions?
Make a motion.
Motion from Lori.
Go, Dr. .
And the second call, favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie. Moving along to the COVID front report. I know Rich had contacted us and said he wasn't going to be able to make it. He did leave a report.
He did. Um, there's been one new building permit issued, two certificates of occupancy, one certificate of compliance, five permit renewals, two property search requests, three final inspections, three COVID inspections, seven worksite visits, seven no permit visits, one compliance follow-up visit, a hundred and twenty total miles driven.
Okay. He's busy. Sounds it. Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept his report.
Okay, we have a motion that accept the report from Kelly. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Carl. All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie, town clerk's report.
Okay, so four dog licenses renewed this month, two new, two renewals, um, one to a district payment and of course we had two deaths, so we had some death certificates this month as well.
Okay. Well, glad we're busier in the building department section than we are on the death certificate.
Likewise.
Okay.
It's been our busiest month so far. Let me wait.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie, I didn't even motion, I'm sorry.
Were you gonna motion?
Yeah.
You can say motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Second, first, motion by Lori, second by Kelly, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Done. Yep. Okay. Tax collectors' report.
I have nothing from Diane.
No, let's just think, I need alerts if it gets real quiet.
Yep.
Back collection is more calories pays in that whole. Sewer district operators report.
All right, average daily low rate for the month of June was 3,281 gallons a day. They purchased a five gallon gas can from G and H in Wyndham and picked up five gallons of gas from the highway department. Um, reached out to Emmens Metro to check on the status of the pump. They came down and pulled from the main wet well location located at the plant. They took the pump back to their shop to rebuild because it's under warranty. They did advise that the pump rebuild has been completed and that they would be dropping it off the next time that they would be coming near our area. Um, they created a comprehensive list of tools, supplies and equipment that they do needed to aid operation and maintenance process at the plant and the collection system. Any questions, reach out to Travis.
Okay. Motion to accept. The supervisor came from Bob, seconded by Carl. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie. Historian.
Um, Kim did not leave a report. I think she kind of covered most of everything over at the other meeting. Um, basically the historical society does have a check-in account now. We are accepting memberships. Um, we've been working on figuring out a logo and T-shirts and stuff like that for the historical society so that we can start a pre-order on that and, um, some other fundraising type things for the house renovation. Um, and I know she had a couple of like genealogy related requests and she's been working in conjunction with you on the cemeteries as well.
Okay. Well, well. Thank you for your version of historian. I don't think you have to pull them out. Highway super.
Um. I've, I generated a report on Wednesday to, to Carrie and, and later on on the week Friday and today's some minor additional things have developed which I will add verbally to my report. Um, continue ditching a replacement of culverts along South Mountain Road. Uh, we have gotten the pavement roller back and it seems to be in good running order. Um, our, our boom mower was out of service for several days and we are exploring the means to replace that unit. I met with the DEP regarding the logging project on Potter Mountain Road. There is some concern about the logging trucks pulling out depending upon which direction they will be going in. Um, in the rare occasion when they need to turn around, they will utilize the driveway to the town gravel bank. Um, DEC inspected our gravel pit and made some minor recommendations we need to complete by the end of July. Our two big projects for the summer besides the paving of South Mountain Road are going to be the complete replacement of two large failing culverts on Chapman Road and on Boland Road. We will then put, we will then replace the guard rails with pressure treated lumber. Um, I'm waiting for a hard date to start this as of, to start as of this writing. I have received that hard date today. It's going to be Wednesday and Thursday of next week. Um, I know the family, there's two, two residences on that road. Um, the residents about the middle of, of the way up has been asking for this culvert to be replaced for I believe three to four years. And so we working with the supervisor, we've, we've enlisted the help of some outside agencies and we are going to do these culverts Wednesday and Thursday. The other one, of course, is Boland Road. They're both going to be drastically enlarged so that the erosion issue, um, you know, it gets, gets minimized. Um, so those people I think are going to be very happy. I spoke with the DEC today. I received a complaint from Jerry Hughes that the stream bank along Pangman, along the creek down there on Pangman Road by the bridge is failing. And actually it is, uh, if you go around to the top there of the carver's driveway and you walk through the weeds, you will be in for a big surprise if you're not know, if you, if you're not watching where you're going because it's a sheer drop. So I spoke with the DEC today and they are going to come. I'm meeting them Tuesday in a week to discuss that.
Um, did Jerry tell you that he had soil and water come there?
He, he did, and he says nobody's interested in helping, helping the situation. I tried, I tried calling DEP. They said that's not their property.
That's right.
Um, so, and I, I didn't really know where to start, so I started with the DEP. I literally went over to the Route 30 office and spoke with two fine gentlemen. Uh, they went, they looked at it and they said, it's not our property. You gotta call DEC. So I did that and I'm meeting with them on Tuesday.
Did Jerry tell you that they got a grant to survey and study it and figure out what, what remediation needs to be done?
He, he said that somebody was there last year, but it, it, nothing ever happened.
Okay.
So if I need to follow up on something, please let me know.
The guy, get, write this down. His name is Pete Nichols, N I C H O L S. He's a great guy. He's the head of soil and water.
In the county.
Yes, it doesn't work for the county. It works for the federal government, NRCS. But just tell him that, you know, I suggest that you call me to get an update.
And. So is his, would his number be in the county directory?
No, I have his email.
You do?
Okay.
Super.
Yeah. He's a, he's a good guy. He won't blow you off.
Okay. So the two big things is getting these culverts that I know that they've been waiting a long time for this to get accomplished. And I'm actually pretty happy that we're, we're going to be able to do it, so.
I am too. They've been complaining for a while. But they, they're really nice about it. I mean.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you, Bill. I made a motion.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie.
Who was the second?
Kelly.
Kelly. Okay. Thank you. Supervisor's county report. I really didn't have very much. I think you read it in the paper. I don't know how much this really packs people, Collesville, but our county administrator, our first and only has taken the job over at Osigo County. And, um, new challenge for him there. He, he's done a lot for the county. Here, bringing us, I'll say, and maybe Matt will, we'll not print it, but he, uh, he got us partway out of the stone here compared to the way we rock. And that, that was a bad. But, you know, he, he's looking, he's looking for new challenges. And they can use his help, so we'll, we will be starting a search for another county administrator who's like the chief operating officer, to use an analogy in business.
That'd be a good job for you.
I once suggested and I said, don't ever say that again. Not likely, I, I could do it, but I don't. I'd like to give up this job. Now, you're not allowed to hold two offices, another office if you're a county administrator. Pay is good, but. All right, that's all I have. Now, one other thing, I don't know if I mentioned this, but with the, you probably heard the state talking about, or maybe they did, lower the gas tax. And it sounds great, but it's really not so great. The reason I say that, well, there's two reasons I say that. And this applies to Skahari County because there's some talk about us putting that in Skahari County, getting rid of the sales tax on the first, I think it's dollars three, three through five. So it's like 16 cents a gallon, or actually the county share is four cents, so it's eight cents a gallon. It's been shown in the past and it's pointed out to me because I was in favor of this. That's a great idea. It gives people relief. And you may have already noticed it when the state did it. All of a sudden the price creeps right back up after doing it. Only thing that's happening is making a higher profit margin for the gas retailers. You probably see that. Well.
I don't see the.
No, but you visit these places a lot.
Yeah.
But so, and you know what? That's just the way it is, remarketing. And, but the problem with Skahari County is not only that, but if you take, just to say that it's $200,000, $300,000 in a year off the sales tax for fuel, fuel oils, you have to make that up from somewhere instead of just say, hey, this is a good deal. That goes against your property tax. And part of the problem is your property tax will go up more than what, what the average person is offset for fuel. Why? Because people drive through Skahari County. They buy gas and diesel here. They don't care. It's not kind of, it's not going to be made up against their property tax. So we're actually paying more and, um, I'm not a big fan of Barack Obama, but he was right when they produced this idea to him when he was president. He says it's a gimmick. It's just a shell game moving it around, making people think they're getting a better deal, so. He's right. So, but what all that long lead in was, I promised I'd be quick. Um, and you're giving me evil eye. Don't do that. Not yet.
Just in the home too, is that all?
But there, there are some people that are really hurting big time. And. I saw a lady came into the office up the county. She had a $6.09 a gallon fuel oil bill that she wanted me to sign. And she said she didn't know how she was going to continue to do that if it goes through.
I don't know what anybody's going to do.
No, I was going to tell you, it's ridiculous.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not the fault of guys like Hidden Valley or.
They have to buy it too.
Yes. So. Erwin Rosa, the supervisor from the town of Seward, came to me with an idea and I like it. We're, if we're willing to forego the revenue on a certain amount of the, the motor fuels from, from the sales tax, we, we know, we get reports from the state on a whole bunch of things with sales tax, what it was against. I mean, new cars, automobiles, restaurants, hotels, but there's, there's a category for motor fuels. We could take a certain percentage of that and put it into a fund that we know the people who get heat benefits. And I want to get into who deserves it and doesn't deserve it. That's, whatever, any program has its share of abuse. So, but those people's, the state guaranteed is not going to put enough money into that program. And most of these people are seniors on very limited incomes. This moment that brought it to my attention was like an oct, what do you call somebody, octogenarian or something like that, something in their age? Um, so we might, if it's any early stages, it might not pan out, but we might have that money set aside. But we'll give it to the, not to the people. That has a way of ending up somewhere else for some. We will pay the providers directly that participate in the program already for heat. And that also includes, I reminded them, if you do, we do this. There's a lot of heat activity here in Skahari County, in Collesville. There's a lot of, and they're buying firewood. What? In this day and age, man? Yes. And we've got a couple of.
It's going to be a hot horn of that this year.
You bet. Oh, by the way, I'm sure it's not exactly staying the same, but it's still far better than 609 a gallon.
People can't afford to put, you know, 300 gallons of oil in their tank every month at $7 a gallon.
Twenty and other ones.
Yeah. People just can't afford it.
You know, now electricity I've heard is only gone up by 10 to 20%, which sounds outrageous. But now electric heat is starting to look, and this is part of it, grand design, don't tell me it's not.
Give it time, young man.
They don't want to dislike everything else.
As soon as they get all this oil and gas out of here, you think the price of electric is going to stay low?
Of course not.
Absolutely not.
No.
Just a game.
Yes, it is. But anyway, we're looking at that and it's not final, but, um, it's, I think it's, it's worth looking at because I mean, it's now. I mean, I'm not a big fan of giveaways, but this isn't a giveaway. These people just, they don't have to leave.
And, and that's worth, worth looking at.
Yeah. Now, we're not going to, you know, give her all the tax dollars away, but.
Whether or not it actually comes to fruition and turns into something, it's worth exploring at least to give some relief to some people.
Yes. And we, and by the way, we don't even have to go look for these people or ask them to apply. We already know because we have the Department of Social Services that administered the heat program. So it's all set up. There might be some other categories of people we might want to think about, you know, with disabilities, I don't know. But I just say that if you really want to make this kick off and the board likes it, keep it simple.
Yes.
Keep it very simple.
Yeah. Because if you're, we're going to lose our base of people.
Yeah.
Is what's going to happen. We're going to make it so it's too expensive for anybody to live in our little town. That's what they want.
Yeah.
I know.
But they don't like rural towns. They, they, they don't like people driving 30 miles to go to the grocery store.
When they leave, they're, they're not going to just leave Collesville. They're going to leave New York.
Oh, I meant the whole thing, yeah.
They're, they're going to be living in one of those states that doesn't have all these taxes.
Yeah.
Why do you think those states are growing and ours is shrinking? There's a reason for that.
I love Texas, but it's just. Yeah, that's, that's, I pass on that. All right, that's my report. Motion to accept the supervisor's county report.
I have a motion.
All right, we have the motion from Lori, and then second from Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You didn't have to agree with what I said, just accept it. All right, town business. Do you have a copy of the May 2022 financial report? Comments, questions?
I think you have it.
Yeah, I, I also gave you guys a copy. Could have all, all passed around.
Oh, yeah.
Well, if you want, I'll pass it around.
I pass it back.
Oh. You want to, let's pass it over. We can move on to something else. I just didn't want to print out five of those. Right, I'm going to move on. I'm, we'll circle back to that.
Do you need another copy?
All right, thank you. Thank you. Bob's already looked at it. All right. Um, you also have a budget resolution? Somewhere, here it is. This is just for routine business that we do every month. Yep, nothing out of the ordinary. Um. Since it is, I mean, if anybody has any objection, say so now, but otherwise let's lead to a roll call.
Supervisor Federies.
Aye.
Councilman Fager.
Aye.
Councilwoman Matisse.
Aye.
Councilman Pragman.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Thank you. So fast, I'll stall. Yes, I know. I didn't know how to thank you, to be honest with you. Okay. You finished looking? You still looking at that?
I'm doing it.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the May 2022 supervisor's financial report?
I made a motion.
Carl makes a motion.
One second.
Second from Lori. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Carrie. Uh. Well, this is sort of related. I kept the subject as proper tax discussion, but we're going to be starting the, uh, the budget cycle once again this year. Uh, probably first week in August, I'll be asking especially Bill for input on budget for next year. I told you I'd sit with you and do, do that more proactive. But everybody else that has some portion of a budget will also get a request for, uh, telling us what they need for next year, also with a report that tells us what they spent against their budget this year and what I, I started to do last year, because I think it gives you a better picture is they're rolling 12 months, in other words, what you spent in the last 12 months as of July 31st, because there's some seasonal things you would normally pick up this time of the year. So. And there's always fuel, which is going to be a killer, especially for, well, even here, but a killer, especially with the highway department. And, um, you know, sometimes you just say, ah, we'll put 2% on, that should cover it. I don't think so. I mean, there's no sense in saying we're not going to budget for it because it's too much. We're going to need to do it, so. It is going to be a super challenge. Everywhere. Absolutely everywhere. So. Will the, the, moving on, the bond or bond anticipation note for the, uh, the loader. Working with the bank, you guys authorized me to negotiate with them for anything up to 3%. And for those of you who don't know, this is a renewal of a note that we have. Uh, municipality can do it for up to five years, then they have to call, do what they call serialized, which is 10 years. You don't want to have it. So we've already paid off one fifth of the price of the loader. And this will be for another fifth, so it'll be the second year. It's the National Bank of Cuxacki. We have a tremendous, um, interest rate of 0.65%, which was a lot lower than the, uh, and we could have paid, we didn't have the money to pay it. Is 0.65 by 12 in force is 0%. So it was in our interest. Well, interest rates are going up and they do want to maintain a relationship with us in terms of adding maybe our checking accounts and things like that. So they gave us a 2.5% when the public rate is 3.5%. I guess I should say thank you, but, um, anyway, there's a resolution here that we need to pass because they're going to want to see if we make sure the board agrees with me saying, yeah, it's good, let's go. And then I will meet with them tomorrow or, um, Wednesday to do all the, it's almost like a clothing. I mean, it's enough money though, to make it that way. So at the end of here, and like I said, Carrie, I need you to sign off with me and you know, put your stamp on it all and all that other good stuff before you leave. But we have a resolution on the last page. I think I gave you some loose ones, though.
Yes.
Perfect. If you could read that, if you don't mind. And then.
Resolution authorizing supervisor to sign renewal bond anticipation note for refinance of the 2021.
Komatsu.
Komatsu model WA 320 eight-wheel loader in the amount of $143,810.80. Resolve that supervisor, the town of Collesville is hereby authorized to direct to renew and sign bond anticipation note with the National Bank of Cuxacki, of Cuxacki, New York for the refinance of the 2021 Komatsu model WA 320 eight-wheel loader with town highway department in the amount of $143,810.80 with an interest of 2.5% um, per annum to mature July 20, or July 14th, 2023. Is this to certify that the above resolution was offered by councilman?
Federies, I'll make the motion.
Um, and seconded by councilman.
I'll second. Okay, I'll reply.
Intimating the town of Collesville Town Board held on July 11th, 2022. A roll call followed. Uh, Councilman Smith.
Aye. Yay.
Councilman Pragman.
Aye, but senior, not junior.
I didn't see that.
Oh.
We can correct that.
Fix that. Um. Councilwoman Matisse.
Aye.
Councilman Fager.
Aye.
Supervisor Federies.
Aye.
Thank you. And I have the check that you cut for me. I'm, I'm going to pay them back. It's a once a year payment for the interest and for the, um, principal. I'll get it done this time. So, but let's get together before we need to.
Time change happens. Where's it been at?
Oh. Well, technically I'm a councilman too, but you're right. Okay. How's that working out for you, that loader?
We couldn't live without it.
It's a nice piece of, it's a.
Great piece.
And we got a great deal on it.
Very versatile.
Okay. Councilman House update. I'm not, there's not, we, we talked about that a little bit from the historical society's perspective. I just want to let you know that, um, this week I have a person coming in from the Mohawk Valley Economic Development District and she is a certified licensed, something like that, um, home inspector. Her focus is on, um, green energy or, or energy conservation, which is fine. I mean, I'll, I'll take that as part of the review. She also will look at, um, things that may not be energy related, but need to be done in the house. And she'll sell us what, roughly back in the envelope, what it'll cost. And she'll prioritize it for us. Now, again, she's focusing on the energy, which is fine. And if we feel we need a little more meat on the bones on what she reports with the other stuff, then we'll have to get somebody. But right now it's free. Let's see how that works out. And the house itself, and Lori was there, so it was better. And that is a member. And the house itself, and Lori was there, so was Carrie, and that is a member. It's just a mess, there's a lot of things that need to be picked up. And I'm telling you that, yes, there's work to be done, for sure, but it is a lot better than it might have been. I mean, somebody says you're gonna be in by within six months, I did answer that because I thought that was a little bit too ambitious, but it is. As they say in the business, as long as, there's another, built like a brick, you know a lot also, that's another way to put it. Anyway, keep you posted, hopefully we can get some more money. The J.C.A.P. grant, J.C.A.P. Justice Court, something.
Assistance program.
What's that?
Assistance program.
Okay, thank you. Nice call, J.C.A.P. So does, what's her name? We want a project grant was that we would get in what they call split system for heating and AC. And right now we can use the AC, it's a little stuffy in there. But, and it would be with a, it's a heat pump, right, a cold air heat pump, that's the future. That's, I'm sure the cost too, all around $26.90 a gallon. So, we put out bids, we've already got the painting done, we've got the riser, which is what makes the jet sits a little bit higher. And the main item to be done in terms of construction to the building itself is the floor. And we're just trying to work out a date with the contractor. And we're going to do the, I would like to do it as soon as we can, but who knows with schedules and things like that, especially. So, we have three bids from three contractors that have expressed an interest, I'm shocked that we got three bids. And you can tell us who they are, I don't know how lanky they are, but we'll pass them around here, but just give us the bottom line.
E.G. General Mechanical has put in a bid coming out at $24,500.
And that doesn't mean that this is acceptable bid, even if it's low, if you want to know what we're gonna do for us. Or scheduling.
Cool Temp's bid comes in at... I'm a little confused because on one page it says $25,990 and then on the other page it says $21,690, so I'm not entirely sure which one is the final total. But I'm gonna go with probably the bigger number.
All right.
And then Family Dan's bid is $31,000. So, I will ask these around.
Take a second. Put in the detail. What's in the sack? This is the two-page one?
Yeah.
What's your one's $25,000, $21,000? And I think they're Cuxacki, so they got a little bit of a ride. He knows about this stuff and he's looking confused at what they put.
No, no, they're incorporated the NYSERDA.
Oh, discount.
Uh, discount of $4,300, that's why it came to $21,690. They were at $25,990, but they have the AirSource heat pump incentive, which is part of the NYSERDA program. Which give them, and they're estimating the amount to be $4,300. We'll probably be able to check with them to make sure that's where they're at.
I can find out, I know somebody over there.
Yep. Me too.
Okay. You know, though, I can ask this person who's meeting on Wednesday. They're putting it in there, which is great, but we could ask for it too, unless it's not an energy star. And then maybe we don't want it if it's not an energy star, but this $4,300 or whatever the right number is. If we go with one of the other two? They don't have the exclusive rights that incentive.
Well, it depends on which grant program they're involved in. If it's a NYSERDA program, then the NYSERDA people give that right to them, and I don't think we would qualify for it. But there's other federal ones that maybe we would qualify for.
So, it's worth investigating.
Yes, I certainly.
12-year parts warranty? Neighbors. Whoever's watching, we're just going through bids right now, that's why we're quiet.
Probably the compost truck, you hear the fan out there, it's 147. Yep. You can hear that?
I thought it was a fan.
Two of them did fujitsu, the one did lighting, they're both good units?
Yeah.
Electrical work got included?
Yep.
That's a problem, sometimes, I mean, it's a bad thing, but you want to try and compare apples to apples. Who's that? Well, I think it's the owners, over the last about three or four years, they pulled it out.
Yeah. That was, he was one of the guys that worked for him.
Oh, was it?
Yep. That was being contracted, this being, being general mechanical.
Well, maybe we need to do a little more research before we decide, but if you really want to wait another 30 days, I don't decide. Because we do have a deadline on the grant. I mean, we probably could say we have somebody, but like anything else, like it's hard to get supplies or materials. We go hat and hand to the state and say we give more time, it's not our fault.
How much more approximately would electrical part be?
I don't know. I did get a email from, forget the guy's name, from Family Dan's.
Vic.
Okay.
Vic Singh?
Yes.
He's the one who put that out?
Yes, it was. He wanted to know if the electric was included, and I said, yes, I'm looking to you to do that. So, I think we need to make the tough.
I would check with Cool Temp as well and find out if there's, includes the electric from the panel to the condensers.
And it says, what is this high voltage wiring performed by others?
On Cool Temp's?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're not doing it either then. Most of the guys over in Green County don't, because they know they have to have a certain license in order to do it, so they don't include it in that.
No, but they can, they get something to do it for, you know, obviously charge it back to the customer, but.
Yeah. Yeah, when they're doing bid process, they don't.
See, I like the idea of the sub messes up, we still go to the people that we got, that we hired.
That's what we did in the camera garage too, we got Jesse.
So, Family Dan's?
Yeah. Electrical work.
Yeah. I'm reading that right, Family Dan's is doing electrical. Yeah.
Yes.
Because he asked me. That's why he's probably a little more. Sure. You know, I'm surprised not one of them came out and asked to do a cycle. Maybe they feel they don't need to, I don't know.
Yeah, most of them do enough of it that it's not.
Okay. What are we gonna do then? Family Dan's is the only one doing electrical. But if we went back and negotiated or figured out, all right, so we can compare apples to apples, do we want to give them the opportunity to give us a quote on the electrical and say, listen, you know, we want to make sure everybody's bidding on the same amount of work.
Do that, or we have to have an estimate from an electrician to run from the panel box to each of the disconnects.
I'd rather they did it, though. I mean, if they want it, they'll quote it. But, so Family Dan, I'll take another look at it, but Family Dan's right now appears to be the cheapest, or they're the only ones with the electrical.
They're the only ones with electrical, most expensive, but they're doing the electrical.
Right.
How much is the electrical?
And don't. Well, I don't like, why don't I go back to these quotes, the other two, that don't have the electrical? And ask them for a quote on the electrical. I don't want to, see, I don't want those not participating or getting knocked out of the box, especially if it's to our advantage, you could maybe get a better price from the Family Dan, then Family Dan's, or unless they're lowest, and Family Dan's fine. Just saying, little dog in this fight.
I just think it'd be easier to get an electrical quote from somebody local like Jesse. And then just add it on to the other two. Because it's just going from the panel box to your feedage disconnect. These guys are all providing the disconnects out there. So, it's a question of running a 220 line from the panel box to each condenser.
All right, and what I think, I don't think we're ready to avoid this. Much as I want to get rolling on this, I don't think we're ready.
Well, we have, we have the quotes, and then if we can get a quote on the other, we can incorporate it into it.
So, yeah, all right. I give this back to Carrie the whole, I need a copy of course, I give this back to you the whole, so we'll, and a motion to defer waiting, avoiding this until we get a better handle on the electric.
I'll make it, you were gonna say something, Bob?
Yeah, now, you think you'd a quote from Jesse, but it's fine, but what if, if they get their own electrician and not use Jesse, their price might be different.
Well, we can ask him if he.
Well, that's the thing, they're quoting this at that price without doing the electric. We have, we have a quote to do the electric, we know what it'll cost us. So, if they go ahead and try and get one after the fact, and it's more than that, we can just, well, we've got a guy who'll do that. And he's a licensed electrician.
Yeah.
And that's where you're gonna run into a problem, I think with both of these, I don't think either one of them has a licensed electrician. I don't think you'd get them to give you a quote on doing that.
They'd have to hire an electrician.
Yeah, there's a sub, yeah.
Do we have to get one more quote for an electrician?
Probably depends on how much it is.
It doesn't say how much, he just, they rolled it in.
No, 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 we're saying.
For giving a bid.
If we get a bid.
So, like $10,000?
Better, I think they raised it to $10,000 and then they go? Before you have to get.
It depends on your policy.
We have to get three quotes over $1,000. Not a formal bid, and it's always like $25,000, something like that. Yeah, we, to go up to bid, it'd be about $12,000, something like, I think 10. I thought they raised it. They did to 10, it was worse. Depending on your point of view. We don't know about that.
Story of my life.
So, all right, we're not ready.
Okay, we'll hold on to this.
Well, I'm wondering, Carl made the motion, who's seconding it? Seconding yet?
Oh, I'll second the motion to defer.
Yeah, defer, till we have more information. You made it, you seconded it?
Cali.
I don't care. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, Carrie? Town, this is from last month, Nick has already started the baseball season, I haven't heard any complaints, so I guess that things are going good. He's all stocked up, he's got his uniforms for kids, he's got baseballs, other material. And now I'm moving here. Annual tire day, recall last month, we voted to do annual tire day on July 9th. And I immediately got hold of our contractor we've been using for years, Casella. The reason I like Casella, I have only answers, not only do they provide the container, they also provide the disposal of the tires. They've got, I don't know, they sell them to somebody, they tear them off, they're a big outfit. So, long story short, I've called them multiple times, very nice people, we'll get back to you, because we don't have a date, we can't go, no, we can do that date, or we don't have that size container. So, and I sort of gave up for about a week, because I had other things to focus on, so. It's only July, so like you guys told me, get the date that I can. And, but I don't want to do it on less than two weeks' notice, because I'd like the town folks to know about it. And I've been hearing stories about a lot of tires that have been sitting for a while that have been identified, so. I think we went with a 20-yard container last time, I make that for a third, could be that much. Worst time of the one with all the falling.
You see, a lot of tires from your garage over there, just waiting.
They're all off. They're wrong? Most of them went out for caps already.
Oh, you're capping them, I thought you were waiting for the.
No, no, we only have, right, a dozen.
Oh, okay.
All right. That's high on the front, all right, caps. Okay. So, that's where we have the tire day, a couple people have asked me, or called me, said, I thought we were gonna do the tire day, my answer is, yep, I thought we were too. But we'll get something done, and we can't get this out, we'll have to find somebody else. Good people, nice people, I've dealt with it for like seven or eight years now, it's just that, I don't know, maybe we're too far from them. They are a big outfit, real big outfit.
Well, you said we're having trouble getting a dumpster for the house too.
No, I didn't start on that.
Oh, you didn't?
No, no, I just said, I hope I don't have trouble for the dumpster. I think it's a little bit different in that, that's not a specialized, this is just trash that they'll take to a dump. Get a bay and we'll.
There's several fairly local people that did a regular.
And we have. And we also have an accountant at Bloomfield, Kenny Els, or Lou Willem. Yeah, and that's who we used to clean out the old firehouse. And we had more than we thought, like anything else. There, I called them up and said we needed to replace this dumpster with another one. And like within two days, they were there. So, I'm not worried about that, we can do that. And the last thing I have is the insurance. Well, that's not on here. No, I sent you an email, read your email! I sent you emails, and I just got it Friday. But anyway, this is a proposal, which I gave a tentative OK, saying that if the board had any issues, then I would be back to them, and they said that was fine. There's nothing weird out of the ordinary, we've added one or two pieces of equipment, plus we also added a couching house, which is about $500 or $600 bucks at this point, it's really not that bad. She asked me, well, how old is it, because they picked out a new capacity, 18 maybe, you mean 19 maybe, it's about 18. So, anyway, this is business as usual, you know, it's the same amount of coverage that we've had in the past. So, if anybody has any objections, or you want me to tell them to hold off, because we're gonna be getting the invoice pretty soon, it's a lot. Actually, I already got the invoice, but I can't understand what it's for, so they're gonna have to. so they're going to have to put together eight different invoices. Uh, the renewal premium is twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-six cents, which is about, I don't know, about four percent. We have to maybe add more to it.
Yeah, I looked at it when you sent it out. I, I have no issue with it.
No, not bad at all.
No.
They tried to push cyber quote everywhere, and we're starting to hear that some carriers are going to eventually demand that we get that.
What is it?
Cyber quote, in case we're hacked or something happens to our, what is to protect us and we have to recover from it. County has ones, I think it's like sixteen thousand dollars a year, it's a lot of money. But I kind of think it's worth it. But they, they, they didn't have anything major identified with where we are. I answered some questions about fifteen minutes on the phone. They came back and said, well, here's some things that you need to do, or I will be giving you some things you need to do. I don't know nothing about this. So I'll give it to the county IT department to figure out if it's something we want to do. I mean, even our computers now, any laptops or equipment we get, we get through the county and it has all protections that they have, several rings of security that you can't, yeah. If you're sending something to somebody in the county, has to go through this perimeter review, and if it looks okay, it goes to a second or steeper review, and then it goes to a third review. And I'll send an email to somebody, and it goes through. An hour later, I send another email, comes back saying, uh, not accepted for cybersecurity purpose. I have no idea what the hell that's all about, same person.
Or just a word or something.
Could be, could be, or, or the source, I mean, we also have certain countries. If it's coming from Belarus or Ukraine, I mean, they can fish it too and say it's from there. It could be from Middleburg, but, um, they get real scrupie because they've already tried to hack our board elections database. Then, nothing to do with the, the, the data or the voting integrity. It just wanted to know, they were testing it. They think it came from Russia, Lenny Ray, or whatever they call it now, St. Petersburg. It's, it's.
One by one?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. That's now our next war is going to be fought. All right, so I got, it was pretty good, wasn't it? West in an hour. No, you did. Oh, wait, I, I, I think, I, I looked at you before showing it, I said, I was going to put him on the spot and ask him. What? Anyway, do you want to tell us about the, uh, the center?
Yes, I removed the gates today, Bennett and myself, and I cleaned the place up a little bit.
Okay. You talk about the gate you removed?
Yes.
Was it heavy?
No, no.
I figured it was an old gate.
I'm going to take it back to the shop and prime it and paint it.
Okay.
Uh, one of the posts that's, uh, that the gate was hanging on, I have to remove that because they're overlapping, you know, so I want it to have them the way they should be. I'll do that.
Is that because they shifted over the years or something?
Not really, it doesn't, it looks funny to me, but, uh.
Okay.
I love Daniel, I think.
All right. The one on East Combsville Road? Not East Combsville, Upper. Yeah, that's the first one we want to. Oh, okay. Yeah. It's bigger than I thought. It goes down the hill. There's a hill there that just drops off. Yeah, and indeed, and part of it's going to be very rough to cut. But I don't think they buried too many people on a forty-five degree angle.
Well, you never know.
Yeah.
Look at the road, it may help upstairs. They run out of space, they'll use it.
The one down by D's, it's like.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. One down, one down.
Yes, they were. Okay. Does anybody have anything they want to bring up for, for the board? Okay, that's good. All right, I'll entertain a motion to review the invoices. And then those who want to hang around are welcome too. And if it happens after that, we're going to adjourn.
I'll need a motion. Can I make a motion on Saturday?